So, good evening and welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, September 11th, 2017. Please rise.
For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, and pursue their aspirations and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. This evening, we'd like to ask for a moment of silence and reflection and think about Mr. Anthony Capobianco, 30 years in elementary, both Ridgeway and George Washington and the intermediate school, and Mr. Arthur Rondau, 26 years, White Plains High School, Science Department and Chair of the Science Department. Of course, we also ask for your reflection and thoughts related to those who lost loved ones and friends on 9/11 and those who continue to suffer based on that terrible day. Thank you.
Next, we'll have announcements. Any announcements by board members? I can...oh, your call.
Just real quick, beginning of the school year, we had two football games, saw Charlie at the second and saw you guys at the first. Looks like it could be a long season, but we'll see how it goes. A lot of people showed up, which was very nice, caught a swim meet, again, nice activity, 70-plus kids on the swim team, which is great activity, and some, caught two field hockey games as well. Again, a lot of new blood, a lot of new activity. I guess the girls' field hockey team exceeded their score, all of last year's scoring in one game this year, and they matched their wins for last year as well. So, it's exciting and it's nice to see the new blood, it's nice to see people very excited and doing well, and it's just the beginning of the year. And then we've got the opening days coming up, the buildings look nice, just when going through them for the sporting events, looked like they've all been hard at work putting them back together, and the shiny floors always look great, Frank, so thank you.
Just to echo what Jen said, but really, also to highlight the swim carnival at the high school. Schools come from all over to be there, our high school is always in tip-top shape, and our pool is definitely a destination pool, so thank you, thank you Frank for that as well.
Mr. Delletta and his staff.
Yes. Anything else? Okay.
So, this evening, we have a very special announcement, and Principal Doherty is here with us this evening, and she is going to reveal the next four inductees to the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. Good evening, Principal Doherty.
Good evening. This information is no longer embargoed, as of this minute. It's my pleasure to announce the next four distinguished White Plains High School graduates who've been chosen for induction into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame not only celebrates the achievements of truly outstanding graduates, but it also recognizes the contributions of our high school teachers and staff, and it's a real source of pride for our students. The four graduates who will be inducted into the Hall of Fame this fall will join 74 other distinguished graduates, ranging from the class of 1921 to the class of 1984. Each has been selected by a hard-working Committee of School and Community Representatives who review all nominations each year. Here, in the order in which they graduated from White Plains High School, are the 2017 inductees. Ralph Waite, class of 1946. Mr. Waite, who passed away at the age of 85 in 2014, was an ordained minister, book editor, and political activist who ran for Congress three times in Southern California. But you may know him best as John Walton, the father in the long-running TV series, The Waltons. Mr. Waite enjoyed a 55-year career on Broadway, in films, and on television. Our second inductee, Dr. Robert L. Johnson, class of 1964. Dr. Johnson, an internationally-recognized expert in the field of adolescent and young adult medicine, is the Dean of Rutgers New Jersey Medical School. Dr. Johnson has received numerous awards and is Chair of the New Jersey Governors Advisory Council on HIV/AIDS and related blood-borne pathogens. Georgia Cucandis, class of 1977. Ms. Cucandis is a respected executive movie producer and an onset physical producer who, over a 30-year career, has produced 17 films and served as a unit production manager for 23 others. Some of you may fondly remember Georgia's dad, John Cucandis, a teacher, coach, and administrator in the White Plains Public Schools for 40 years. And finally, David Levy, class of 1980. David Levy, President of Turner Broadcasting, is one of the most respected leaders in media. He oversees the company's portfolio of domestic entertainment, kids and young adult networks and businesses, including TBS, TNT, Cartoon Network, and Turner Classic Movies. Mr. Levy joins his former colleague at Turner, recently-retired Chairman and CEO Phil Kent, who was inducted into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame in 2008. This distinguished group of alumni will be inducted into the Hall of Fame in a ceremony on Wednesday, November 15th, in the Media Center at the high school at 3:00. We really hope that everyone joins us, everyone's welcome. Thank you, and just a plug for that committee, and in particular, Amy Geiger, who now will kill me for mentioning her, but she is an extraordinary woman. I really can't say enough about her, runs our community service program, is a tireless advocate for our schools, and most, most of all, really loves our kids, so shout out to Amy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, do we have any communications? Do we have any public participation? Okay. Since we do not, we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and good evening again, everybody. First up this evening, we have a number of reports for you, and first up this evening, we're happy to welcome Mr. Gary West to walk us through an update related to summer school. Mr. West, would you like to control or do you want to just go up there and click through?
I can click.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us this opportunity to kind of highlight what we do in summer school. So, I'm just going to be as brief as I can, and I may not speak in order of these slides. I assume that you'll be able to view them if you want to read all the information. But, you know, our elementary summer school program is for pre-K through 2nd grade, and just to let you know, those are the grades they are coming from, not the grades that they're going into, which is why pre-K is included. So, these are entering K through 3rd graders, and we identify the kids in K-1 and 2 based on the DIBL scores in the district, because that's our common literacy data point. So, kids who have not yet met Benchmark are invited, not all of the kids are able to attend, but we get a commitment from the family, and we had about 260 that attended this year. The pre-K kids are selected based on the dial. The primary focus of our program has always been on literacy. So, the kids are in smaller groups than they are typically during the school year, and we try to group them as homogeneously as we can based on their DIBL score, so that they're in a group of kids that are in similar level to them, so that they're able to really focus instruction for those kids. So, you can see on this slide, the main instructional goal, and then a lot of the strategies, a lot of the components that we use are things that they do during the school year, they're just able to do them in a much more focused manner on each individual kid in the class. The 2nd grade curriculum for the kids going into 3rd grade is an American Reading Company curriculum about bugs, they're learning how to research, and this is the first year that we had live bugs included in the program, so it was very exciting, and some ladybugs and spiders and butterflies. I had to unpack the spiders, and it was a whole ordeal, but we did, but we did get them into the classrooms without losing any. Mr. D was there just in case they went running around the building to clean them up. We are housed at Post Road in the summer because of the fact that it's air-conditioned, and it's a comfortable building for the kids. So, this year, for the first time, speaking with Kathy Barpoulas, who's our K-6 math instructional coordinator, we noticed that there is need, based on our math data in this district, for kids to get some targeted math instruction as well, so we wanted to bring that to the earlier grades, right? That's where we can capture them. So, we did implement a math program this year, and it basically was about 30 minutes each day, we were expecting the teachers to work with kids on math, and it was very much aligned with some of the programs that we use in the district. So, in 1st and 2nd grade, they used to do the math, which has a lot of built-in assessments, which is really great, because you could really see how the kids were progressing as they were in the summer school program, which is only 19 days. And then for K, it was very much aligned with the information that they use from the Common Formative Assessment for those kids, so we took some of the components from there to really focus on with the kids in the summer. So, it was the first step, and we implemented a pretty strong program with a lot of help from Kathy, and we're going to continue to refine that. So, the next slide is really about the math. And again, you can look at that information in more depth later, and if you ever have any questions, you're welcome to reach out to me. So, of course, you can't have a program with Mr. West without having music. So, we start every morning, just to highlight some of the other things that we do, we start every morning with music, with singing and dancing, I sing with the kids, I teach them about nine or 10 songs through the course of this 19-day program. So, every morning, we meet in the auditorium, and we spend a few minutes just singing some songs, doing some movement, you know, there's research that shows that that wakes up both sides of your brain, right? If you sing and you move at the same time, it uses both sides of your brain, so it's a great way to get kids kind of active and awake and engaged and ready to go to their classrooms. So, we do that every morning, and they love it, 96% of them love it. And Dr. Ricka actually came and was able to see what we do in the morning one day, he visited us several times over the summer, which was really great, and he even, of course, took a little video and it appeared on Twitter, before I knew he used it, and so someone said, "Oh, I saw you on Facebook last night," and I said, "Excuse me." So, that was why, thank you, Dr. Ricka. So, but it was, it's really a great experience for the kids, and it's a little bit of an enrichment activity, and I think it makes it a lot of fun for them. And you can just see here how many sections we have per grade, and again, we had about 265 kids that attended this year. It's only 19 days, they're only there for two and a half hours, so it's not a long time with the kids, and so we do a lot with the little time that we have, and we're committed to continuing to grow the program in terms of its, what's the word? Efficacy, thank you, in terms of its efficacy for our kids, and so we're looking a lot at the data that we gathered over the course of the program in math, because we have a lot of pre- and post-assessments, and then in terms of the literacy, we're going to be looking at the DIBL scores after the first round of DIBLs in the district, and comparing those with what the kids did at the end of the year last year. And of course, that's always a little tricky, because, you know, they have a whole five or six weeks after the summer school program is over, that they're not in school, but we do look at that, because we need to look at something, right? And Dr. Ricka was able to come right before the end of the program, and he read The Ninja Bread Man to two of our 1st grade classes, one of which was Ms. Malo, so if anyone knows Ms. Malo or has ever been in her classroom, she has pretty much every book known to man in her classroom, and she did not know this book, which is shocking, and Dr. Ricka shared that it was one of his son's favorite books, so he came and read it to the kids, and they just really, really enjoyed that, and it was a great activity for them to do at the end of the school year, so thank you for doing that. So again, please take a look at the slides, if you ever have any questions, I'm very happy to talk to you about it, but that's kind of the program in a nutshell. All right.
Singing and dancing in the morning was wonderful. The big fight at home, taking Harrison's book to bring to Mrs. Malo's class was tough, but he understood. ESY, we have a fantastic extended school year program in the district, and we thought it appropriate to give a brief update on our ESY program as well. Sal Garten?
Thank you. I'm here with Ebelies Pilardi, our summer school principal, to speak a little bit about extended school year. So, extended school year is a little different than our other summer school programs, because it's mandated by regulation to meet the needs of students who have individual education plans throughout the school year. It's intended to meet the needs of students who have our most significant learning challenges and who would otherwise demonstrate significant regression if we did not provide this service. The time, the length of the school day and the length of summer school is mandated through regulation, so it's a five-hour day, five-and-a-half-hour day, and it's a six-week program. This year, we ran 11 classrooms, and we serviced all our students, grades K through age 21. We were able to service all of our students using our own staff, which is really a testament to the teachers and the teaching assistants and the related service providers of the White Plains City School District, because often, summer school people take off, and our staff elects to come here and continue to work with their students. It provides continuity for our students, and it really makes summer school seamless for them. So, the goal of summer school is really just to sustain whatever academic, social, and behavioral skills they've learned during the school year, and Ms. Pilardi is going to share with you how we do that.
Good evening. So, as Ms. Ogunan mentioned, our goal is to prevent regression, not only in the content areas, as well as in the social skills and life skills areas. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to bring our students to the Greenberg Nature Center on two separate occasions, where they got to not only experience a presentation from the Greenberg Nature Center staff, they also got to walk around and enjoy. Each year, they have different presentations, this year was a butterfly exhibit, so they were able to enjoy that, and enjoy the facility as well. We spent a day there, had lunch, a picnic, so it was a really great experience for our students. We also partnership with the farmer's market, which allows our students to visit the farmer's market. There's a lot of planning that goes into this visit, because our students have to be well-prepared, so they can be able to enjoy the experience. We are hoping to expose them to different community activities, so that it would facilitate these outings with their own families. Sometimes, simple outings for some of our special-needs families is challenging, so by us exposing them to these different activities will help them be able to do that with their own families. Community Day was another day where we had our Police Department, Sanitation Department, as well as the Fire Department come, and we had a great activity in the parking lot of Post Road. Dr. Ricka was able to join us, as well as the Mayor. Our students had an amazing day, each department got to show off their skills that day, so it was great. Classroom academics, as we mentioned, we focus on using the same curriculum, the ABLEs curriculum that we use for most of our classes during the year, and we try to incorporate some fun, because it is summer. So, we incorporate Fun Fridays, where our students get to do a lot of hands-on activities, they learn how to make ice cream from scratch and other things, as well as having our Fun Fridays, where they get to play with water, thanks to the assistance of Mr. D, who's always available and willing to help us with all that stuff that goes into making that happen. So, although our goal is to prevent regression and to maintain skills and content, social skills and life skills, it's also to introduce our students to our community, so they can have a connection to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Middle and high school. Ms. Hall is here, Mr. Furry?
Myself, Mr. Furry, and Ms. Laporte ran the secondary summer school program. The secondary summer school program consists of middle school and high school. Our middle school program consisted of 7th and 8th grade, we had 22 7th graders and 33 8th graders. Our main focus was a long, similar to Mr. West's program in regards to math. We worked closely with Ms. Laporte as the Assistant Principal of Summer School, and as well as the math coordinator, to identify specific needs within the 7th and 8th grade math curriculum, so to basically make sure that the kids were comfortable before moving on to the next grade, and then we also worked on giving them some skills, some preset skills, where they can go into 8th grade or 9th grade and be ready for the 8th grade curriculum or the algebra curriculum. In addition, we had a 7th grade and 8th grade ELA block, where they focused on basically reinforcing their literacy skills through test-based activities. And in addition, we had a project venture component, where they worked on problem-solving skills and team-building skills. So, that was the middle school program, and then within the middle school, we also had an Avid Excel program, which is a program for our ELL students, so that they can continue to build their academic language, their leadership skills, and, you know, reinforce their commitment to school. That's the overall math of the middle school program, and then at the secondary level, or the high school level, I should say, our focus is on credit recovery and preparing them to pass the Regents exams. So, as you can see on the chart, this is our success rate by exam by category. So, we have three different categories in high school, summer school. There is the credits, where students are taking the course for credit, as well as trying to pass that Regents exam that's attached to it. Then there's students who have passed the class, but they need to pass the associated Regents exam, and then there's the RO sections, which are the students who did not attend. So, as you can see, overall, students who attended the summer school program did better than those who are our ROs or our WACs.
What is RO?
RO, it's Regents-only, our WACs, our students who prepare on their own, have tutors, and they come in just the day of the exam.
When you audit, do those kids attend class?
The audit students attend class, just as if they, you know, if they were taking it for credit, but they don't need the actual credit, they just need support to pass the Regents exam. We had 32% fail the actual summer school course, but we had a 68% pass rate. We had an overall enrollment of 285 students in our first period class, and in our second period class, we had 233 students, and we had three graduate from summer school, two of which are on their way into the workforce, and one is who is headed into the Marines. So, that's secondary summer school. Thank you.
Thank you. So briefly, we, of course, welcomed everybody back last week, and it was fantastic to see all of our children and all our buildings, and I just want to thank everybody for all of their hard work in making sure that the schools were ready. It was really a great day, and it's been a great day ever since, and it doesn't come without a lot of teamwork, so thank you very much, everyone. Also, congratulations to Eastview, they were, I should say, their program, Girls for Tech and Code, was recognized by MasterCard's CEO as a Force for Good, award-winning program, which of course means they are going to receive additional funding, so that the program can continue to move forward. But again, it's also a nice highlight for Eastview and for the school district as a whole, and our continued work to provide enrichment opportunities for our students, in this case particularly for girls involved in STEM. Now, the moment we've all been waiting for, Mr. Stephanelli, an update on our facilities. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. First, I'd like to just thank the Board, Dr. Ricka, and then Dr. Kara Taich for the support, you know, over the summer and over the school year. Couldn't help, couldn't get it done without the support of the Board. What I'd like to talk about is, it was a busy summer, so my head custodians, my custodian staff, I'd like to really thank them, because it seems every year, with, as you saw with the curriculum and all the summer activities, we have less and less of a timeframe to get things done, and it's very difficult sometimes when we're doing construction and we have students in the building, because we try not to do it at the same time. Some of our projects, and I'll just go through them very quickly, you know, district-wide, we had stage rigging, we replaced all the stage rigging at all our schools. Most of our schools, some of that stage rigging looked like it was there when it was originally installed, and we had a contractor who came in and told us, you know, he wouldn't really hang anything on our rigging, so that was why we went through and we did extensive, all summer it took us to do all the schools. We did staff, Church Street, I mean, if you look at the other paving, we did the high school, George Washington, Church Street, Ridgeway. The city came in and relined all our schools as part of our joint facilities. So, I'll just go by each of the schools real quickly, these are major items, you know, besides the cleaning and all the other stuff, I'm just touching on some maintenance things that we did. We installed new locking hardware for the security update on the schools, so Church Street was finished this summer. We did staff restroom improvements, which was on the list for the last two or three years, the faculty was at chasing me. Sidewalk replacements, we did the lower corridor floor tile, I think it got flooded one too many times, and then tiles were picking up. We provided utility and roof penetrations for the food service, I don't know why, they put it in the actual kitchen, so it made it twice as hot in the kitchen to have all that refrigeration equipment, so we moved it out and put it on the roof where it should have went. George Washington, the auditorium and gym locker, we did hardware as part of the security assessment audit that we did. Faculty room drainage, we had water coming into the faculty room from the grade, so we took care of that. This is one of, the picture here is that we put a new path around the playground, because it seemed like when we had special events, people were driving on the playground, wrecking the surface, so I got tired of fixing it, so we actually did something to put a path around it, so they could drive. And then we did some abatements, floor replacements, and then we also replaced the entire ceiling in the library and in the computer lab, and we put LED lighting, which is, it is really neat now. The prices have come down, they look like little wafers, these fixtures themselves, so it's pretty easy to install, and we're going to be doing that throughout the district. Maronic Avenue, we started with a floor replacement, we thought it was going to be a simple floor replacement, but, you know, we didn't know there was three layers, and the third layer was something that we had to have abated, so that was one of the things that we had to take care of, and we came in late in the summer. We put, we're changing all the fountains, so most of the students, we put water fountains that have bottle fillers, so now the PTA bought the students their oil bottles, so now they're filling up the bottles, it's a real success at MAS, and we're starting to roll it out to most of the other schools. Replaced the domestic hot water, we did some concrete pads and stuff like that. Post Road, it is getting older, and we're using it more and more as a full-time school, but we lost our first heat pump, it just so happens if you talk about design, and I wish, I wish the engineer was here tonight to talk about that, but we ended up cutting the unit out, and we had to take half the ceiling down to get the unit out, so that's our first one. I think that in the future, we're going to see more in that as the building starts to age, and these things are 10 years old, so they're going to start aging out. Ridgeway, we just did floor abatements too in the PPS, we new casework in 105, 107, 109, 111, 113, 123, you know, the floor, we sanded and recoded the floors, and I think we did most of the gyms throughout the district, so I don't know why I just put it here, but it was throughout. We had a sump pump replacement, tree pruning, we did that throughout the district. Highlands, we painted the entire corridors and halls, we put new lockers, which we did in the previous school year, during the school year, we actually replaced most of them. We did flooring repairs, we did fence replacements, shades, drainage improvements, you know, there's a couple of classrooms that were flooding every time we had some big rains, so we decided to fix that. Eastview, as you see, that we, it was, I thought it was slowing down, but it didn't really slow down, but we had family services, Westchester moving in, we had old classrooms that weren't part of the original construction, we had to get them ready for family services. I hate to say that, I think they just got all the furniture in, I think they got approval, so they're going to have students start coming in, I think, this week. So, you'll see, if somebody's going to the thing, you could go around and you'll be able to see it firsthand. The high school, we put all new shades throughout the school, actually, I think those mini-blinds had seen better days. We put a new projector in the auditorium, new lockers, and C-Wing, as you see the picture, they go with the school colors, it really makes the corridor pop as the kids are walking down. We had to rebuild the boilers in A-Wing, that was quite a feat, it's just about finished now, we're just starting them up this week, get them ready for service. We did some floor abatements, we put a new rubber floor in the Tiger's Den, and we repiped utilities around the data center, so that hopefully we don't get a leak and it doesn't flood out our data center. And then finally, Rochambeau, we did some work. Ed House, we did some drainage improvements. But moving forward, I just want to, real briefly, is that, you know, we're still doing some hardware replacements. We did major the classrooms, but now we're going back and doing all of them. We have domestic backflow we're putting in. We're doing restrooms in the basement of Post Road for the field use. We're doing ball field drainage improvements. We're in design. Ridgeway, we're doing steel door replacements. We're doing exterior restroom that's going to go on the field. Highlands, we're doing the stage plaster wall. The bids came in twice the price that we were estimated to be, so that's going out to bid. We need a new UPS system. We're redoing all the lighting in the stairwells at Highlands, converting the same fixtures to LEDs. Exterior restroom, the buildings are built, they're ready to be delivered. We're getting ready to pour the pads. That's going to start soon. The field house, we hope to have natural gas there, the lines there. Waiting for O and R to connect it. The equipment's being installed now. Hopefully by mid-October, or shortly, we'll have heat. District-wide initiatives, we did the security audit. We're starting to go through some of those and get that work done. The high school, the generator's under construction. We're just waiting for the gas service to get hooked up there and get approved. Air conditioning fitness room is under construction. Most of that work's done. The pathway, the door replacements, the pool LED, it's under the design. Intercom system, we're going to replace it entirely. So there's STEM room, classroom design. And then last if not least, the electric transformers. We just found out that our transformers are overheating. We're over eighty percent, and that's usually the code, about eighty percent of capacity. So we are there. We're going to have to do a, we're going to have to look at replacing this, upgrade the service at the high school. So that's going to be definite if we're going to increase the air conditioning system. So that's the end. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Frank.
I have to say to everyone, we always call Frank because we always use our facilities. So whenever we see something, Frank could get a comment, he could get an email, he can get a call where, look, I was on the field and I saw X, Y, and Z. So thank you for being receptive to that.
And our last presentation this evening, Dr. Hand is going to share with us an update related to the New York State standardized assessment data.
Thank you for the opportunity to review the New York State testing data for ELA and for math, grades three through eight, as well as Regents data for middle school and for high school levels. As we review and analyze the data, it's important for us to remember that these standardized exams, especially in grades three through eight, are one snapshot of a student's performance and what they do in school from a daily and a yearly perspective. As a district, we can use the data to help us plan and make necessary adjustments to our curriculum and instruction. And these are really basic preliminary reports. But we have access to much deeper levels of data that can be disaggregated to help us understand subgroup performance, grade level performance by subject, and also by standards. So, you know, we can really drill down into it. So this is just really, truly an overview of our performance. And as we go through it, we'll also mention how, you know, due to, due to a lot of different circumstances, it's not easy data to interpret as well. So we have to take it, you know, for its value, for its face value. The first thing, as we enter our ELA data, is we noted slight decreases in grades, in grades three and four. If you look at our third grade performance, there was a decrease from the previous year in 2016 of forty-seven percent proficiency to forty-four percent. And in grade four, from a forty-three to a thirty-seven. However, in grades five and six, seven, and eight, we see increases. So I'm going to go through the next data slide so that you can see grades six, seven, and eight as well. And then just to highlight the grade eight that was illustrating a seven percent gain in proficiency rating. I might as well mention it now, though, because with opt-outs and children having non-tested test scores, the N-values change on these graphs from year to year. Plus the fact, the test has changed. It's gone from a timed test to an untimed test to a three-day test with this many multiple choice questions and this many extended response questions. So you're really not comparing test to test. So again, it's just kind of like an overview. And the cohorts are different as well. So it's nice when you see the increases, and then when you see the decreases, you feel a little like, what's going on here? But it's not so easy to answer. So I just want you to know that we'll carefully review everything, but we put all the other data together as well. Everything else that we have with our children's performance throughout the year. If you look at our cohort data for ELA, you'll see that as the, and so how this chart is read. It says twenty-four, twenty-fourteen to twenty-seventeen because they have started the grade level. That's the beginning of their bar graph within that year span. So twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen. So in grade three, do I have the right, yes, in grade three, we had, I'm going too fast. I'm flipping, I'm looking at a different chart, sorry. So in grade three, as the children move from grades three, four, and five, you'll see what their performance was as fifth graders this year, how they performed in third grade, and how they performed in fourth grade in the previous years. The cohort performance for four, five, and six, the same way. That's our current sixth grade, when they were fourth graders, when they were fifth graders, when they were fourth graders. Same thing, grades five, six, and seven, current seventh graders, as they were performing at the sixth grade level and at the fifth grade level. And so you'll see that in grades, in the cohort span of our sixth graders, our seventh graders, and our eighth graders in ELA, we have seen that level of increase in our cohort performance. In the third, fourth, and fifth grade, our current fifth graders, we see that decrease from fourth grade. But you'll see that across the state as well because the fifth grade test is a bit different. It does get a little bit challenging. So when we see our fifth grade test scores, ourselves going up, we'll see that eventually that will catch up with them as they move up through the grade levels, if that makes sense to you. And then if we look at our math scores, our math scores in three, four, and five, we'll see an increase in performance for our third graders from the previous cohort to forty-six percent from thirty-seven, and that's nine percent. A slight decrease in fourth and fifth. And then we go into seventh and, sixth and seventh, we see a gain in that from one year to the other of twelve percent for proficiency, from that twenty-eight to the forty. So that was a very nice gain for our sixth grade. And then from, and the seventh grade is that slight, that slight gain from thirty-four to thirty-five. Grade eight, it's important to note that many of our students in grade eight take the Regents exam, and their Regents performance, we'll go over in a minute, that the children who are taking the actual eighth grade exam, their proficiency rating is at eight percent, which is a gain from our previous cohort. But we definitely need to target attention to our eighth grade taking Math eight. In their cohort data performance for mathematics, you will see the gains as the children have moved through third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Again, it's the same way that we read the cohort data for ELA, that the twenty-seventeen is the current year or last year when they were taking the exam. I wanted to point out the sixth grade. Sixth grade, we saw that nice gain in mathematics. So when they're going through the cohort, even though we see that slide from forty-six, forty-five to forty, we have to remember that was the grade level where we saw that performance move from that twenty-eight up to the forty. Again, you know, not, not so easy to interpret when you're just looking at one graph separately. And then, of course, that sixth to eighth grade performance, once we bring in the algebra data and we see from sixth grade to eighth grade, our eighth graders taking the algebra and also taking the Math eight exam, making that gain from thirty-five to thirty-four to fifty-eight as they move through that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade cohort. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about test refusal and how complicated test refusal gets in really taking our scores and making meaning of them. They actually have given us from state data, just in terms of our percentage of students who were eligible to participate in the test last year, who refused the test was sixteen-point-four percent. Out of that sixteen-point-four percent, thirty-five-point-eight percent of those students had refused in the previous year. So they were second-year refusal. Of those second-year refusals, that's where we can disaggregate the data further to say how many of those students were level one, level two, level three. And you can see from the chart that it was seventeen-point-three percent for level one, twenty-one-point-four for level two, twelve-point-eight for three, and three-point-one for four. So when you're looking at our refusals, there's consistency to some degree in the value. But then the other group of children that opted out this current year had, didn't have test scores for the last year too, or had test scores for the last year, I should say. And then the economically disadvantaged, the forty-nine-point-three percent, it's kind of like puts us in the middle. You know, sometimes districts or we're saying that, you know, a certain group of children opt out. Here, it's kind of, it evens out across the different populations. So interpreting the data, I kind of talked through the slides when we were going through them, but some highlights and steady gains that we've made in ELA that we're seeing through grades six through grade eight is that grade six data from twenty-fifteen to twenty-seventeen has illustrated gain in proficiency from twenty-eight to thirty-five percent. Grade seven through the same year spans, proficiency from twenty-six to thirty-six. And grade eight data illustrated a gain in proficiency from twenty-nine to forty-two. Strong cohort performance in ELA that I pointed out was that cohort from fifth to seventh grade in ELA, last year's current seventh graders, from fifth grade to seventh grade, we saw their gains in proficiency move from twenty-eight percent as a cohort to thirty-six percent. The same thing in grades six to eight. We saw that gain in proficiency from twenty-eight to forty-two percent. In math, to highlight for the grades three through five and grade six to eight cohort, three to five made in math that gain as a cohort, starting in third grade at thirty-five percent as a cohort, they moved into fifth grade at forty-four percent. And then for the sixth to eighth grade cohort, thirty-five to fifty-eight percent. It's a lot easier to talk about summer school and to talk about facilities and test scores out loud. In grade, in twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen, the proficiency of grade eight students scoring at or above sixty-five on the algebra regions has been one-hundred percent for the two years in a row. So we wanted to highlight that as well. So challenges and areas for growth. Challenge is the number of test refusals in each grade level and the changes to the state exam. Like I told you, it's just really difficult to interpret this with absolute values. Another challenge is improving the performance levels of our subgroups, particularly, especially our special education and limited English proficient students as a subgroup. An area for growth would be improving our participation rate for our students in each grade and subject as per the federal and state regulations of taking the exams so that results are stronger indicators of our performance. The other thing is the state will be changing the test this year to a two-day test. We still have a three-day window, but the exam will only be given on two days in ELA and mathematics, so that is definitely a plus for us. And areas of growth, just continuing to improve our resources. Thank you to the Board of Education and to Anne as well for supporting us with the budget to make sure that we can put the best resources and refine our instructional practices in our classrooms. We made a lot of investment. We made a great investment in classroom libraries in the elementary schools this summer. We invested in math materials for middle school and up through high school. So we're really working hard to improve, you know, our daily instruction that our children, you know, are engaged in every single day. And then also to share practices, practices across classrooms, across grade levels, and across school buildings when we look at the data, you know, deeper. So the next few slides, Regents results for the middle school, Highlands. You'll see the Regents results for Algebra I and Geometry, and also for Earth Science. And the first bar graph is for twenty-sixteen, the second is for twenty-seventeen. So you'll see consistency in the math, and you will see growth in the Earth Science. And then the final slide, don't cheer, but the final slide is the Regents results and the percent of sixty-five or above at proficiency. And again, there's a chart for twenty-sixteen results and twenty-seventeen results, and then the bar graphs are on the top. And you'll see that we're fairly consistent. The one thing that I want to note when looking at these charts, especially for the algebra, the geometry, and the Earth Science, is that we have the children that are taking them in eighth grade, so they are, they are already disaggregated as eighth graders in this data from the high school. But there's consistency, and we see areas for growth, and, you know, we'll use this to continue to plan. And I just wanted to, you know, end by saying thank you to the board, and thank you to our administrators, and our principals, and our coordinators, and our directors, and all of our teachers and parents, and especially our students who work so hard every single day and never forget that they can't just be measured by a test. So that's very important to me.
Thank you, Dr. Hand. Thank you. And then just real quick, a reminder, we have the Big Kickoff for Dads Take Your Child to School Day. The kickoff's actually going to be this Thursday at Ridgeway, and we're pretty excited about that because it's going to be the kickoff for the entire county. We also have some guidance nights coming up, college application night, I think, is coming up, right, Ms. Hall? And then, of course, Dad Take Your Child to School Day on the nineteenth. Next week, we have Open Houses and Picture Days. Lots going on, so please make sure you take a look at the calendar. And then something real special, Piece One Day, right at the high school is going to be taking place on the twentieth as well. So lots, lots of, lots of great things happening all throughout the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Lots going on. We're going to move to our summary action items, but before we do that, I'll need a motion to remove, under Section Eight, Aiden Missash, so his certification can be reviewed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We have twenty-one summary action items. May I have a motion?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you very much. I would like to thank the White Plains Substitute Teachers Association for the Guy Matthews Scholarship Fund donation of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars and six cents as well this year.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to other action. We have the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Rosemarie Ampha, Director of Secondary Special Education, probationary period October eleventh, two thousand seventeen, to October tenth, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion? Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You're here. Do you want to say anything? Do you want to say anything? You don't have to. Just waving. Thank you.
Do you mind if I, I'd also like to recognize Kirby's here with us as well today, and she just received tenure. Congratulations.
Next, under bids and contracts, may I have a motion for the approval to amend the Special Education Services, RFP, which was previously approved on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, which I think we all answered? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval for the superintendent to enter into an agreement with the City of White Plains for school resource officers in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Audit Committee minutes from August twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Internal Auditor Report for the Human Resources Department and Correction, Corrective Action Plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have any questions? Do you have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of state and federal grant budgets. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of non-resident tuition agreements for the STAR program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Free and Reduced Price Meal Program, including Family Income Eligibility Guidelines and Certification. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move to board discussion on the revised policy for cellular telephones. Are we okay with that? So, I guess we'll have that on an upcoming agenda. Next, this is the first reading.
For the viewing audiences, it would be good to describe what we're doing here. Yeah, sure. Very simply, very simply, we're amending the present cellular telephone policy to, to ensure that for folks who don't utilize a district-owned telephone, but, or cell phone, but use their own for, for work purposes, basically 24/7, 365, that they can be reimbursed a portion of their monthly bill.
So, this is, this is the first reading. We get to read it and ask any questions before it's formally adopted. So, next, we'll have board committee reports. The finance, the finance committee met, and our minutes were approved, and Human Resources met, but we can't discuss that in great detail.
It's a combined meeting.
Yeah, it's a combined meeting.
Curriculum and instruction next week, and special ed the week after.
Sure. We just talk.
Yeah, I have questions. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'd just like to recognize John Shepherd and call us Alvarez in the back, keeping us on and in the note, Nielsen ratings. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to enter into exec session to discuss personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.